I can.
Okay, good. You doing okay?
I'm doing good. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Ashley, I need to leave the Zoom meeting probably about 1:30 at the latest.
Okay.
I have a closing. I have to be at 2 o'clock in Hickson.
Okay. Hopefully we'll be done or pretty close to done by then, so. Well, it is 12 o'clock. I have all the commissioners except for Commissioner Cannon on. Has anyone heard from Commissioner Cannon? Oh, here he comes. So, we can start once he gets settled in here. Everybody is muted on when you enter. And the commissioners are welcome to unmute themselves. Anybody else who, when we get to the point with public input, or if you're an applicant, if it gets to your turn right to discuss, you are welcome to unmute yourself at that time. We're trying to keep background noise to a minimum. I do need to announce at the beginning of this that it is a public meeting being held based in compliance with the Tennessee Governor's Executive Order Number 71 at this point. It is being recorded and I'm also broadcasting it live on the Development District's YouTube. And it will stay there after the meeting for anybody who wishes to view it at a later time. So just need to get that out of the way and we don't have a chair at this point. It is on the agenda this evening to have an election of officers. We can't do that right now because we can't take any motions because this isn't an official, regular meeting, but Commissioner Cannon, I believe, was secretary. So he is the technically highest ranking at this point. Commissioner, as far as positions go, so Commissioner Cannon, if you would like to lead the meeting, or if you would like to select another commissioner to lead the meeting, you may be so.
Sure, I can lead it. Not a problem. I guess, first thing, first is roll call. And so Commissioner Cannon is here. Commissioner Browder.
Here.
Commissioner Luther.
Here.
Commissioner Millard.
Here.
Commissioner Scrumburn.
Here.
All right. All right, everyone's present, so I guess, has anybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meeting? January the 19th. I scanned over it. I wasn't present at that meeting. But I didn't see anything obvious in those minutes. You guys want to?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes.
So we will approve as as listed currently. With no modifications. So I guess, Ashley, we can't do the elections of the officers, but do we want to talk about those today? During the work session to be prepared to address it at the public meeting.
Sure. I can just give a quick overview. There's a chair. That is the person who leads the meeting. Follows Robert's rules kind of loosely. And basically, you know, they, if anything were to go out of order, they would try to get the meeting back on track. They also sign some documents. The vice chair's role is simply to fill in for the chair when the chair happens to not be present at a meeting. And they are authorized to sign should the chair be unable to sign something for any reason. And then the secretary takes, well, in the bylaws, the secretary is supposed to take minutes. I, as part of my job, I take the minutes, but if I were to ever not be here, the secretary would need to take minutes. And the secretary also signs, they sign plaits that, you know, once they're approved, they sign off on the plaits. And the way it will work is you will just nominate individuals for the positions. And it, majority of the body votes to that individual will be made the officer will vote. I'll take nominations and if more than one person is nominated, we'll vote for each person. And then, yeah, it's pretty simple and straightforward at that point. And you're allowed to nominate yourself. You're allowed to vote for yourself. And anybody who's held in office is allowed to continue to hold that office if they get reelected.
Well, I'm prepared to stay as the secretary or the chair, just however the consensus is on my my position, so I don't know if anybody else is willing to to do the vice chair or pursue the chairperson's position, so. But I'm open.
Okay. Commissioner Cannon, I'm open as well. I'm happy to serve in either role.
Okay.
Commissioner Cannon, I'm happy where I am. I don't find being secretary, but that's probably the highest rank I'd want to go right now. I feel like I'm not as educated and have the knowledge that some of the other, like Becky and you, the knowledge from the past, some of the things I think that are very viable, you know, as being the chairperson. And with my schedule, I don't think I've missed but maybe one meeting in two years, but you know, there might be a time that I can't be there that I think is very crucial that, you know, the chairperson be at every meeting, so.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up because I didn't even think of that myself, but yeah, sometimes my schedule is is at max capacity and I may not be able to attend as frequently as some others may. But I don't know, that's definitely something to consider. I try to be there as often as I can, but I know this past year I haven't haven't been able to make as many of the meetings as I wish I could have, but how about our new planning commissioners? Do you guys, would you guys like to chime in on any of those positions or anything?
I think I'm going to pass right now on the positions. I'm definitely looking forward to learning from y'all's leadership.
Yeah, likewise. I mean, I think it'll do the commission the most good to have the most experienced commissioners in those roles.
Okay.
Commissioner Cannon, I know you do have sometimes scheduling conflicts with your work, so my schedule is much more flexible. I do try to make all the meetings, so for what that's worth, just wanted to add that. I just know my schedule now is much more flexible than yours.
Sure, yeah. Well, that's a good point, so, you know, it may be best, Becky, if you can, you know, to fill that chairperson's role. And then, you know, I don't have issue with with continuing as the secretary and signing the plaits and those items. If Sonya maybe feels comfortable with being the vice chair. I don't know.
That might work well. You do have more experience than we do in terms of reviewing the plaits and that sort of thing that you've been doing. That's worked out well, so I don't know. Sonya, you might just want to think about that.
Man, I would consider that. Like Kate said, you know, I feel like we all still learn from each other's leadership and knowledge, but.
I agree. I'm still learning as well.
But I, you know, I don't mind being Indian. I don't want to be a chief right now. You know, but if I advise, it'd be fine, you know, whenever it gets to the point that we vote on it, will that be like? I don't know. When will they vote, Ashley?
It'd be Thursday.
Thursday evening.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, yeah, I mean, I'm open to that, so, you know.
So Sonya, you could fill the vice chair role. And
Yeah, I mean, if you felt like you didn't want it, you know, Bill.
Yeah.
It's because of your maybe absentee or something, you know, but I'm comfortable, you know, for a meeting or two, sure.
Okay. All right. Then I guess that's kind of where we will go with our voting on Thursday, so. Let's see. I guess the next item there on the the new business that will be reviewed is the Freeman family subdivision on lots three and four. Ashley, would you like to fill us in on it and then give us kind of your your recommendation and why you feel that's the direction we could look into?
Sure. This property was rezoned back in 2018 at the property owner's request from R1 to RZ1. And the plat was recorded in 2018, dividing the property into three lots. They're now coming back. That was the stated intent at the time, and they're now coming back. They have, one of the lots is larger. And they're asking to split it into two lots. This is typically administratively approved plat, but because of the nature of the request from 2018 and the nature of the rezoning ordinance, Tim and I felt that it was appropriate to bring it back to the planning commission for review. So the ordinance that was passed does not limit the density of the development, and it it does say his intent was to create three lots, but it doesn't put the limit of density on the plat or the development of this area. So there is room for a fourth lot. It would be a more narrow 14, 15 foot wide house would be the maximum width of the house, which it's narrow, but it's not unheard of at all. I mean, it happens quite, I mean, fairly commonly in more dense areas, and that would leave 25 feet between that home and the next property owner. And in your packet, my review starts on page six. And on page eight, you can see the conditions that the planning commission and the, I'm sorry, the city ordinance or city commission placed on this rezoning, which was to follow stormwater best management practices that the alley to the rear was not to be used as an access to that property, so they couldn't put garage facing the alley. And that the property lines would, they would use the existing pins that the neighboring property owner had had identified on his deets and recorded plaits prior to this request. So there was a little bit of a disagreement about where the property line was, so that settled that property line, so. I felt that, just given the nature of the of the development in that area, if you can see on page 12 here, just there's some narrower, more closer together homes to the north of it, and then also down here on Avenue, I felt that it would be, it would fit in with the area more generally, so I felt that it was appropriate and that it could be approved. Of course, I was not part working for the planning commission at that time, so, and I did put the minutes in here from that meeting, so there's always, I do rely on you to, you know, if there's something about this neighborhood or something about this property that I'm not aware of, where it couldn't be approved, to also, you know, consider that as well. But I felt that it would, it would be in the same character as the other homes in the neighborhood. I recommended approval.
The, I recall this particular case, there were several there in opposition and concerns at the time from surrounding property owners stating that they already had issues with stormwater runoff. And 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 I think basically, you know, my position is that with the steep grades we have over there, and unfortunately, we've got steep grades on just about all of these cases that, that are coming through today. But, but my concerns are the same, you know, the more impervious area that we create, the higher velocities and volumes that we end up creating, that runoff. And then end up giving us problems with INI and other issues with our stormwater and storm sewer systems. So I'm comfortable with recommending to approve the original language in the ordinance. But I don't think the additional impervious area is going to help the problems we have there already. So I see that as just a, an, an additional increase to, to our, our problems we've got there. So the other, the other concern I had was with the size of the proposed home on the fourth lot. I know you, you had noted that, that there were homes being commonly built at 12 feet in width. And I, you know, in, in all of my time of reviewing developments here at the city of Chattanooga and in Red Bank, I, I can't recall reviewing plans for homes that small in, in a zone such as this. So.
Me either, Bill. I've never heard of, I thought Ashley said 14 feet, but still it doesn't matter. That's still not a big house.
Yeah, 14 to 15 feet.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I don't know. I didn't have time to run any calculations. But looking at the setbacks, side yard, front and rear, and then, you know, the proposed width of the home, I'm trying to figure, you know, what would be the maximum square footage they could get out of a home that size with the height limitations and everything else? So.
Unless it was about five or six stories.
Yeah, that would be a, that would be a tiny home.
A tiny tall home.
Yeah. And that's certainly not in keeping with, with the character of the neighborhood and the surrounding properties. So.
Well, Mr. Garrison is on, on the call here. If he'd like to chime in about, I mean, the, I can't, I guess I don't remember what I measured, but the two houses to the north is quite narrow. You know, it's shotgun style homes are becoming more common. I mean, it, it, it would be a narrow home. I'm not, not denying that, but it is not impossible or unheard of. I'm not trying to say that every neighborhood has a home that narrow, but it's, I mean, there, you can find building plans for that size of home very easily because they're built in a lot of places. But I understand if, I mean, if you don't believe it's at the character of the neighborhood, then the neighborhood much better than me for sure.
Are most of those, are you talking about maybe some of those at South Side? You know, where they're pretty much uniformed the whole street? I mean, it's like a street of them or it's not just, you know, just one stuck here and one stuck there, you know? I guess, I don't even know if I've seen any in the South Side that small, but.
For reference, the house there to the north is 24 feet wide. That, yes, that one. I looked it up on the property assessors database.
Yeah.
That's good to know. I get some perspective. I went by there to look at it. I've got some of the same concerns that have been expressed by Commissioner Millard and Commissioner Cannon. But also another concern, I read through those minutes and like Ashley said, there were several people adjoining property owners that had come to the meeting and expressed concerns. And they were under the impression, you know, there would be, I guess, three lots at that time. And now this is a proposal to make it four lots that have they been made aware of that? I mean, there was no sign or anything up. And I know it's, when this was approved, there, there was no density requirement, but there was apparently an understanding when this was approved that it was three lots instead of the four. So I'm concerned about that those neighbors don't know this and don't have an opportunity or haven't had an opportunity to weigh in.
Yeah, that's, that's a, a great catch on that for sure.
Certainly, I mean, plats aren't, don't have public notice the way that a rezoning would. So.
Right.
Part of the reason we brought it to the planning commission was because of what those concerns have been in the past. And if the commission would like to table it for another month and get more notice out to the neighbors, that would be an option as well. And Mr. Garrison is, I mean, I feel like he needs the opportunity to discuss, to share his.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to, to also see and, and hear more about that design for that fourth lot that he's proposed. So.
Yeah, I'm, are you all able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Just to first clarify on the stormwater. I, when I broached the idea of building on the second lot there, I was told that I would have to have stormwater, I guess, engineered. And I have engineered plans already stamped and drawn for four homes on there to completely mitigate any, I, I don't know the terminology, but to slow down all the rainwater, to detain all the rainwater, even I think a little bit beyond what the site originally was before the first home was built. And I'm under the impression that, you know, even to build the second home there, that detention pond will have to be built in order to, to appease the city. And we're, you know, have every intention of doing that. The, my, my intention, and I understand that giving me that fourth lot, you know, that I, I don't know what options you all have. But my main intention is to be able to build the second, on the second and third lot, assuming that the third lot is divided and, and we have four. And then I don't have any intention in, in building a narrow house there. I believe that, you know, at some point around that corner, it will likely be RZ1 down the road, which will, you know, allow that to be a house of similar size, the, the 24, 25 feet wide. I, I, I just would like to continue the same style of house on the second and third lot and not give up the fourth lot, if you will. And I rather, you know, not exactly. You know, you all, you all are worried about the, the fourth lot being built, of course. I mean, I do, you know, I've looked at plans. I mean, there are, you know, there are quite a few options on doing a more narrow house. Again, I would like to just use that as a large side yard for the, the third, the third home. And then just down the road, you know, if that, when that home sells, be able to kind of keep it as a, you know, just a grassed area for those three houses to use and have some space there. And then down the road, you know, whenever, whenever the rest of, of cover circle ends up RZ1, which I imagine eventually will happen, be able to do something with that, that piece of land.
Okay. Well, personally, what I, I would prefer is, you know, if, you know, we, we're kind of speculating on if and when that, that build out may happen. So I would, I would think it would be in the best interest of, of the, the general area to, to come back at that time and subdivide out that fourth lot. And as opposed to doing it with these other two homes that you currently want to build. I think it would be much cleaner that way. And as long as, as long as we're designing the stormwater detention properly, so that it, it meters out that, that additional volume and, and velocity with the newly created hard surfaces and impervious areas that you build there. You know, I'm, I'm comfortable if, if the city manager is, is comfortable with the, the engineered drawings for the system. Personally, I, I don't think it's, it's the time to subdivide out that lot. And I would still prefer to make the recommendation to, to continue with the original language in the original ordinance for that. So for three lots. Anybody else?
Ju- just, just so I'm clear, this is Blake again.
Yeah, Blake.
That, that would, th- there, there's no option to build the third house at that point. I mean, I could build a third house across the entire existing lot three, but that would leave no option to build two additional new homes and retain the, the fourth lot. Right?
Right.
So, yeah, it would just be, yeah. And I, I mean, that's, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, and, and again, to, I guess to clarify, I don't think it matters too much. But the, the original proposal was for all four lots. And at the city, the city council meeting, they had the concern over the, the width of the, the home that could be built on the fourth lot. And so they didn't approve the, the fourth lot because of those concerns. But it was like, our intention was for four lots kind of from the, from the get-go, if that helps at all.
Yeah, I understand, you know, what you're talking about.
If I may chime in, I have to look into the rules exactly as far as the subdivision regulations. But it would be, it might be possible to have that as a reserved lot or a community lot that's held by the developer as open space until a time where it could be replatted in the future so that he can still retain ownership of it even after he sells off that third, third home.
Yeah.
If that's, I'll look into the rules before Thursday's meetings, but if that would.
I think that's a good idea, Ashley, to look into the rules. Also think, again, like I mentioned earlier, that Mr. Garrison should talk with those neighbors about what this plan is. Because they think that it's all worked out because they, the city commission approved three, three lots. And then now we're coming back to look at this fourth one, and it's the same problem. That obviously what, what he said and that the commission had a problem early on with that narrow lot. So I, I just, I feel like, I feel like the neighbors should be apprised of this. And then I do like the idea of Ashley doing a little more research on what the options are for doing something like this, if that's the direction that, you know, that we end up going. I think we should look at all the options and the neighbors should be told.
Yeah. And I think sometimes it makes the neighbors feel good. You know, the builder that we had over there behind the post office went door to door on every, and talked to every neighbor on that street. And they were very appreciative of it. And, you know, it made them feel like they were sort of a part of it, that they did have a voice.
Right.
I'm, I'm with y'all. Yeah. What, yeah, I, I agree with y'all. Yeah.
The people that have, that live below this do have legitimate concerns with stormwater runoff and the things that Commissioner Cannon had talked about. And they've lived there a while. I recognize those names. They've, they've lived there a long time. So, I mean, I think they at least deserve a sign or a letter or something that says this, there's a change being proposed for that development that's behind them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Also agree.
Ashley, do, do you think that that's going to require us to, to table this one in order for that to happen?
My suggestion would be, yes, well, to table it and he can resubmit a plat with either commu- designated as a community lot or a reserved lot based on the rules, which I can, I will be researching. And then, then it could be reconsidered and, and we can, we, I can talk with Tim if maybe we could get a sign out on the property and send some letters out as well for next.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would be really good. Yeah. All right. So I think we've got that one. That one understood well. So the next, the next case on the agenda is the rezone of eight Gaylord Street from R1A to R3. You want to fill us in on, on your recommendations and all there, Ashley?
Sure. So this is an instance where there is a property owner who, the Farbman's, Joel and Misty Farbman, they, I'm so sorry, I keep scrolling away. They have, they own a duplex at these, this address. It's zoned R1A. At one point it was zoned R1. And then it was changed to R1A in 2015. And now they had run for a period of time on, on Airbnb, short-term rental on one half of the property. And they were notified that they're out of compliance. So they have requested a rezoning so that they can get in compliance with the city. This is an, this is an instance where I was very much on the fence about approving a rezoning. They, it's, it's, it's improperly, I mean, it's, and I went back to previous recommendations from Brian as far as some of these go. So I was influenced by that and came down on the side of approving it with some very strict conditions. I have said, I'm so sorry, I've since heard from several neighbors, and I believe several of them are on the call here today. I'm very concerned about safety and they are very concerned about future development of that lot. Part, one of the restrictions that I recommended was it would only be allowed to be a, either a single-family duplex or a duplex with one side being a short-term rental. And if their license should ever be revoked or their, or lapse for 90 days, then it would revert, revert back to R1, R1A. So that was my sort of compromise recommendation. So it would, it would really, the zoning would just follow the current owners and their current license once they get licensed. But having heard so many concerns, I find it difficult to maintain a recommendation of approval. So, and I'm sure you'll hear from many of the. So um, and I'm sure you'll hear from many of the folks today with their concerns. But I think if you feel that the city's um, current restrictions on short-term rentals are strong and enforcement is strong enough to address their safety concerns, um, it could potentially work in this particular lot and approval could be um, appropriate with these very strict restrictions that I laid out. But if you don't feel that um, you know, it would, it would mitigate those concerns, then um, I would not recommend approving this rezoning. So, and I'll sh- show you. The um, my, my conditions were that it only be a single-family or duplex with a maximum of one short-term rental unit, which is already the maximum for any building. But um, and then it should it lapse or be revoked. Um, they would have to revert to R1, I should say, R1A. And just so that everyone's aware of the short-term rental licensing and Red Bank, it requires that they pay, you know, hotel motel tax to the city. It's um, and if, if they were to get three citations within a year, um, their license can be revoked after a public hearing. So um, and they have to renew every year. So it's not just a license to keep doing this forever. They have to continue to maintain and be in compliance. So there is some um, mitigation of those concerns already in place um, just so that everyone's aware. And here is the map, and you can see is, it is right in the middle of um, R1A zone. There is an R2, a few blocks to the north. And there are a few duplexes within close proximity to that particular duplex. Um, but the rest is all single-family.
All right, um, well, my, my personal position on this is that our, our current short-term rental uh, regulations are not adequate. And as a matter of fact, I wanna meet with the, the city manager um, um, to um, to give him some um, language uh, to look at, to see about amending um, our rental licensing um, ordinances, um, short-term and long-term. So um, I'm hoping to do that in the near future, and I'll share, uh, I'll share that, that information with the, with the planning commissioners. Um, and um, you, Ashley um, for, for review as well. But just, I think even further history on this one, I think is, is really needed. And, and basically, I don't think anybody else on the planning commission today was on the planning commission uh, when this uh, originally happened. But um, but I was a part of the, the original um, long-range plan, the 2035 plan and the, the zoning ordinance uh, revisions. And I recall this property, uh, you know, it was determined to be a spot zone in 2014. And um, during the rewrite of the, the ordinance and, and the long-range plan, it was downzoned back to R1A, and it was given a legal non-conforming status. But uh, grandfathered in um, uh, to, you know, to continue to operate um, as a duplex uh, multifamily um, unit. Um, so um, I mean, we went through the process to try to address what was considered an incorrect zoning at that time. And now, now that uh, uh, we're here today, we're looking to, to turn around and try to approve uh, to overturn our original work to uh, to resolve the spot zone issue. And um, so um, I think, I think the concerns of the, the surrounding neighbors is very valid. And um, and I do believe that um, my personal opinion that uh, that we should not approve um, this request. So uh, and again, there's, there's a lot more to it from, from my perspective as far as densities and, and all and, and um, in R1A and R1 zones and all that. But I hope to, to make it clear to the planning commissioners and the city manager and the commissioners what those concerns are in this draft of a new ordinance as it relates to short-term and long-term rentals. Um, and um, I think we can address a lot of the citizens' concerns through this uh, this new language. And we can also um, um, benefit the um, the property owners that are currently grandfathered in with um, uh, rental units in the R1A, R1 zones. So.
I have a question about that. I'm sorry, I had to turn on my video. I'm having connectivity issues. I don't know if it's my computer or my internet. Um, so thought that might keep me on track. Um, but wondering, you know, do we have an idea of where other um, others exist within our city to kind of see?
Yeah, that, that's just, that's just it. Um, Kate, we're kinda, that, that's what part of this policy is that I would like to, to have everyone review. Um, uh, the other cities uh, have systems in place uh, that um, that track that really well. Um, and historically, we haven't. And so it's really hard for us to even to, to develop a good baseline of data, uh, you know, on current conditions in, in the neighborhoods. So um, that's part of this proposal uh, that I, that I hope to um, to go over uh, with everybody and, and with the, the city manager.
Yeah, I'd definitely be interested in discussing that further.
One thing, Kate, uh, that was done back a couple of years ago, there was an ordinance passed about where short-term rentals, you know, could be located.
Mm-hmm.
And there was a, you know, somewhat of a study done to determine where um, where people were operating short-term rentals, because we really didn't have a rule uh, a- about short-term rentals. So anyway, that was worked out, and there's ordinance passed. There were several public hearings as a part of that process. People who had uh, established short-term rentals in R1 areas, you know, in the residential areas, some, some were complying with the rules. I mean, it's a business operating
Right.
in a residential area. So you have to have a business license, and you have to pay sales tax. And if I'm not mistaken, you have to pay um, hotel motel taxes. And there's certain things that you have to pay to the city. Some people at that time were doing that correctly. And then, and I think they were, they ended up being grandfathered in on that, on that ordinance. And then others were told, you're gonna have to shut down if you're operating in an R1 uh, zone. So we can go back and Ashley can pull all that, but there were, there was uh, like I said, several public hearings and um, people on both sides, let me say, you know, people that were operating the, the short-term rentals, and then people who were against that being in their, in their neighborhoods. I'm, I'm like Bill though, I mean, to me, this is a clear example. Uh, number one, of the owners did not find out what the rules are. I mean, there's always rules in any city about short-term rentals. So I can't understand how they've been operating. I think the note said 11 months maybe, and I know the owner's here, so he'll have an opportunity to speak in a moment. But uh, I don't understand how you would operate for 11 months um, renting out one side of a duplex and not going to the city to get the proper licenses and whatever is required. I, I don't understand that, because all cities have some kind of rules that you follow on that. And then the second thing, like I said, I, I, this is a, to me, a clear example of spot zoning if this were zoned to R3 in the middle of a, of a neighborhood.
I agree, Becky.
And that's one of my concerns is this would kind of set a precedent moving forward for other uh, instances like this we may run across.
You know, something we need to be really intentional on. I would love the opportunity to discuss that further, for sure.
Right. And if, if Ashley, if you could hold that ordinance and look back at that, that would be really helpful. Because we went through this, and there's the, the, the city commission um, was, you know, I, I mean, they're very deliberate about where the short-term rentals could be located and, and why.
Okay. I can see if I can find the minutes on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I honestly don't know what they are. I've said in, I think on one or two meetings when I first joined um, that were about um, short-term rentals. And I feel like I'm not, I, I'd like to know a lot more about it too, honestly.
I have a question.
Yes, sure.
Um, as it is currently recorded, one side is supposed to be the short-term rental. Is that the way it's listed? Am I understanding that correctly, and that the other side is considered long-term?
Yes, and I think the one side is um, eight Gaylord Drive, and the other side is 10 Gaylord Drive.
Yeah.
I believe, uh,
I think it is.
Not an A and a B, it's two separate dress numbers.
So is this one lot and one unit being looked at for the rezone as a whole? Or is it the two different addresses being requested to be rezoned? Because I'm a neighbor, and the reality is both sides are short-term. They come and go all the time. So I'm just a little confused and would like a little bit more clarification on that.
I'm the homeowner, and I'd love to, a chance to speak if, if that's okay.
Sure, um, the, the applicant um.
Mr. Farbman, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Sorry, I, I didn't know the proper procedure. I didn't want to just jump in or uh, say anything. Um, so, yeah, so I, I, uh, my wife and I own the property, and we um, we bought it, and because it was a uh, um, multi-family, we thought that was okay. And so we didn't know, and then we received um, a letter from uh, Mr. Clinton. Um, and I spoke with him at length, talking about all the, uh, the different things. And he said that what we had to do was rezone, so we're not looking to rezone to build anything or anything like that. We're just trying to be in compliance. Um, and a couple of things about, um, my wife and I own it. My wife uh, used to work at Erlanger, and her main job now is cleaning. And so we, a, a couple of things. Um, we have, we, we have a very high bar for people to be able to stay in our homes. We've never had any issues. Um, and it, we don't just let anyone stay in our homes. I think I've heard rumors that someone down the street did something like that, and it was a mess and that. So I'm not sure if there are any neighbors that know about that. That is not what we're doing. We have very high, like, we have empty nights well before, because we have a, a higher price. Um, and we do not just let anyone in. They have to have positive reviews, good experiences in the past with other people. Um, so we don't just, we're very strict about that. Um, and, and um, so yeah, as far as that. Um, and so, yeah, we haven't had any issues. I, I, we don't know all the neighbors. I know the neighbors across the street. Um, and we get along with them really well. Their son actually mows our lawn. And um, I, I didn't, I haven't spoken to the other neighbors, but I would love to. I've tried to reach out to some. Um, I'd love to speak to whoever about any issues that, that there might be. But um, this is, I mean, we're in the house basically every day. My wife is there cleaning it. We take really good care of it. This is not like a, uh, we're not like a company or anything like that, that we're trying to like, build a big thing or anything like that. We're just, you know, this is my wife's main income now, is cleaning these, uh, cleaning them. And um, so that, that is what, that's kind of where we're coming from on that. Um, and we've actually had a lot of guests that have come. There's, I think we all know this, there's an influx right now of people moving to Tennessee, Chattanooga as a whole, the area. Um, we've had a number of guests stay in this house that have never heard of Red Bank, that have been like, oh, I didn't know that there was a different city outside of Chattanooga, and actually looked at it. And we've had a number of people talk about wanting to move to Red Bank specifically, not just Chattanooga, because of staying and we, you know, people are coming in, they're shopping at our grocery stores and things like that in Red Bank. Um, so it's a positive thing on, on top of, we're happy to do whatever we need to do as far as being in compliance, as far as paying, um, you know, the hotel motel, all that kind of taxes. We're happy to do all that. Um, and in this, you know, we only have good people, so like, as it has on the screen here, um, that brings property values rise and um, so, so we try, we want to be in compliance. We want to do things the right way. Um, and we want to, you know, we, we had no idea about before this, what those, was, what those things were. And so, um, yeah, we, we just wanted uh, go about it the right way, and it's not um, yeah, we, we've only had good experiences. Um, this, and this is not like a, basically, we're there way more often than if we had long-term renters that just rented it monthly, that could be not so great. Um, and then they're locked in, um, that, and, and then that we, we just don't allow that to happen. And so.
Do you own other properties? Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I was part of Red Bank, yeah. Like, we own the house that we live in.
No, I mean, uh, short-term rental properties.
Yeah, outside of Red Bank.
In the city of Chattanooga?
Yeah.
How many do you own?
Just one.
One other?
Yeah.
But, but you had to check to see what the rules were in the city of Chattanooga.
Yes, so there's, it's different zoning. I don't understand a lot about the zoning and stuff. And so I was under the impression, my wife and I were under the impression that this was a multi-family home, and so it wasn't an issue until we heard from Mr. Clinton, and that's why we uh, you know, started this whole process. He just told us that in order to apply to be a short-term rental, we have to change the zoning to R3, and then we can apply, and then we can start paying the taxes, which we're happy to do, um, to go about that all the right way. So we already pay the taxes to the county and to the state. That's all done automatically. Um, but we're happy to pay to the ci- to the city as well. We just have to go, you know, do whatever we need to do to be able to get that done.
Um, I'm, I'm curious, did you purchase this property through a Realtor? Or was it just through the property owner um, contract?
I mean, through, yeah, I mean, we had a Realtor, yeah, on, on, that we purchased it with, yeah.
Then, you know, my, I understand where Becky's coming from, but I've, I've also got uh, you know, concerns with the Realtors are supposed to be up on the rules and the regulations and everything else going on with these properties, because there's to disclose uh, as much information as possible. And, and I find a lot of times that they don't necessarily know.
Ours didn't.
All of the information to, to help the, the uh, the buyer um, in these, these type situations. And that, and I kind of, I kind of lay some of that, that blame.
Well, let me, let me tune in there, in a Realtor.
Sorry, Sonia.
Don't, Sonia, defend yourself.
We, um, I have some rentals myself outside of Red Bank. Not short-term, you know, long-term, but um, you know, it's not our responsibility. It is our responsibility to have our clients sign a disclaimer, letting them know it's their responsibility as a buyer to check for all school zones, property zones, um, child molestation, any kind, you know, we as agents are supposed to let our client sign that. Now, whether or not, you know, your agent did or not, but, you know, our office would demand it. We have to have it at closing, you know, to be able to close our file. You had to sign a paper.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, and, and that does happen. I'm not disagreeing at all, Bill. There's a lot of, they just want a paycheck, you know.
Right, right.
You know, do the right thing always, but
Yeah.
you know, I guess at the end of the day, it's, you know,
It's still the buyer.
Our responsibility, you know, to, my sister bought from a sale by owner condo. She thought she was gonna buy and rent. Well, she didn't have a Realtor, and you have to own for at least one year in that complex to lease. So she, she is sitting on a. So she, she is sitting on a condo that she had to, you know, she had for a year, but she can't even do anything. So, you know, sometimes you have to do your own homework, but.
Yeah, buyer beware.
Yeah, yeah, but, um, you know, uh, I, I, I'm like you, I've, I've, I, I just, I, I don't know how I feel about short-term rentals right in the middle. We've had so many complaints and letters and phone calls from some of the neighbors, um.
Well, do.
Do neighbors think that we're trying to build like some big thing though? Because that's, I think that's what's not clear is like, like that's not at all what we're trying to do.
Right, good. But do we have any more of the, uh, the neighbors on, on the, uh, call that, that would like to comment?
I'm Monica. I live across the street from the duplex. Um, I know Susan's on here. She lives at the top of the hill. I don't know if any of the other neighbors are on here. As far as, um, our personal experience versus, um, the other duplex that was up at the top of our street, um, the rumors that were true about that, that I believe Joel said he had heard, there was a lot of riffraff that came in there. That previous owner that went to Red Bank and several of the neighbors here on our street attended that meeting. And we tried to get it, um, disapproved at that time because the person that bought it, bought it strictly for a business. Um, her parents were previous owners of Airbnbs. And I'm very empathetic to Joel and his wife because myself, my husband and I live right across the street. It did cross our minds of, oh, we could do that because they are becoming such a popular thing for the 20th century of being able to run your own business and have an income and be able to be with your family. It seemed so great. But there was so much headache around those zones. We were kind of like wishy-washing before we could even make a decision of getting it. It had already been bought. But back to the duplex at the top of the street, the owner bought it and they rented it out for around 40 bucks a night. That brought in riffraff, partygoers, drug users, people that were going in, you know, 15, $10 apiece. There would be 20 or 30 people out there at 11 o'clock at night, blatantly just, you know, publicly drunk, abusing drugs. Um, they would all wake up and they would, sometimes there would be legitimate ones that wanted to do the scenic city things, canoe, hike, do whatever. But there was very much more on the negative end of that. Um, so that was the big beef is that, and I have a 13-year-old and a two-year-old. So my 13-year-old walks around here and in the 20 years that we've owned our property, um, there's not, there's not a whole lot of opportunity when you have short-term rentals or hotels, so to say, because people are constantly coming and going. So there's that factor of when I purchased our home 20 years ago, we didn't think that we would have to ever have to live next to a hotel. Respectfully, understanding what Joel and his wife are trying to do, but also being a homeowner of 20 years in a residential neighborhood, it, it poses its own hazards, um, aside from that, that being their main income. Um, we've had a positive experience with this one because of their strict guidelines. They don't rent it out very cheap. And from what we can tell, the people that have been over there, um, on both sides have been relatively clean. They're in and out. They don't make a loud ruckus. If there's things that are questionable, I know him, my son mows the grass. I text him or his wife, and I know that they would put a stop to it immediately. The bigger concern with the R zoning three is that it has such a large capacity of what can go into that. Like I was concerned about if they just had a, a zone for our Airbnbs versus long-term and short-term, it might be a little bit more clean slate and clear as to the rules and everybody getting a cut for taxes, businesses, hotel, et cetera. Um, because if Joel and his wife decide in 15 years, they don't want that property, I'm not going anywhere. My children will get this home. What happens when another developer comes in and wants to break that substantial sized lot into four lots and put four tiny homes on there that are three stories high or an apartment complex? It changes the zone for the entire residential homes that we've all lived here and own for 20 plus years. As far as I'm concerned, I believe all of the neighbors have lived in their homes for 20 plus years minus the other duplex. It's a small road. But, um, with having that said, that's just the main concern. And then even though the, the people are coming in and they're genuinely interested in Chattanooga, Red Bank, and they're bringing in tax dollars, I see the positives in that, but I also understand there's places for that, such as hotels, not stuck in the middle of a residential area. But at the same time, we've had long-term neighbors that were just plain riffraff. We understand the long-term has its negatives too. We've had drug users. We've had people that we didn't get along with, that stole, broke in, were just garbage. They didn't keep the property up to date, clean. So it's kind of okay sometimes when you see somebody coming and going. And I see the owners more than I would ever see them if they did have a long-term tenant. I will agree. Um, and also it's just, you never know who's over there. It, it, like they have the upper hand because they can see the reviews from those clients that are renting it. But as a person that has children that walks around the neighborhood, you always have that fear in the back of your mind of, well, we don't know who's in town over there. It says they're from Georgia or Alabama. We're so afraid that they might be abducted because occasionally there may be a contractor or a worker that's over there with a big van. And we're just kind of eerie and untrustworthy. But I guess that can go with either way, you know, sometimes you can have a long-term renter and it, and be total strangers. And then you have the, the short-term ones. But my biggest concern is that it's, it's functioning pretty well as it is for what they're trying to do it. And I understand both sides of it for the income factor and for the residential of being here and, and hoping that we didn't ever have to live next to a hotel. I can see both sides of it, but my bigger concern was the large zoning of it just saying that it can be this, it can be that. Someone could come in because people change their minds, people die, people have accidents. We don't know in 15 or 10 years. I guess at that time it would have to be brought back to the table. And then we say, hey, we're gonna request that this be rezoned again because there's a developer trying to chop this up and they want to put six houses over here on three lots or something, you know? I was just more concerned with that. So that's, that's my opinion and I'll let anybody else that wants to talk, go ahead and talk.
Yeah, I, I think that's another good point, um, actually, um, you know, that, um, this, if the zone is changed, um, then, um, it, it goes with the property and not with the owner. So, uh, if the owner decides to sell it, um, isn't that correct, um, Ashley?
Um, typically that's correct, but the conditions, I mean, Hamilton County is special in Tennessee. It's the only place you can do conditional contract zoning. So this zoning would, um, conditions that I recommend would make this R three zoning go away once it's no longer, if, if there's no license in place for, um, 90 days or more, it would go back to R1A. Um, or if it's revoked, like if some, there were some sort of, um, um, citation, which would cause it to be revoked, it would revert back to R1A immediately. That's, um, you, you guys have passed that for other, like the
Sure.
storage on, on Dayton Boulevard and that kind of thing. So.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, um, any, any other citizens on the line?
Yes, I would like to speak, Susan Brogan.
Thank you, Susan.
Um, I just have a few points I'd like to make. There's only like eight houses on our whole street and six of them are owner occupied. Most of us have lived here from anywhere from 20 to 70 years. And, um, you know, we went through this once before about an Airbnb and we all met with you commissioners. And I think that, uh, right after that's when you pass the law, that there would be no Airbnbs in residential areas. And, um, now it seems like we're, you know, we're having to go right through this fight again. Um, also I reported it to the commissioners, I think it was Ruth Gino, about, uh, them being, that house being, that duplex being used as an Airbnb back in August. And she had, uh, someone look into it, but like I said, they're still, you know, they continued using it for that. And, uh, you know, it, it just doesn't seem right that we should have a business in our little small neighborhood where we all know each other. We've all lived here for a long time. We all get along. And, uh, the other, uh, duplex that tried to be the Airbnb, they said the exact same thing, that they set high standards, you know, for who they rent to. They check them completely. And yet there was still problems with them. So that kind of, you know, gives you reason to think.
Yeah.
Plus, uh, you know, if you make an exception for this duplex, that's going to set a precedent for, you know, any neighborhood in Red Bank. If somebody wants to use their home or whatever for an Airbnb, you know, that's going to set a precedent for them to try to get that rezoned too. And, uh, let's see, also, they were using both sides of the Airbnb already, whereas I'm, I was under the impression that they, one side was owner occupied. And also property values do not rise when you have an Airbnb in your neighborhood. They drop.
Okay. All right, um, well, Susan, thank you, um, for your comments. Um, do the, uh, planning commissioners have anything else, um, to add to this one? Um, I guess I would just reiterate, um, the fact that, you know, we went through this whole rezoning ordinance and long-range plan to address these type of spot zones. And, um, and my, in my position, in my opinion is, uh, that, um, uh, that it should not be, um, approved for an R three, uh, zone. So that's, that's where I fall on, on, on this particular case.
I, I agree with you, Bill.
You know, I, I feel like no matter how well you vet your, you know, your occupants, it's more the, just the nature of the business goes against the, um, you know, the, the, the neighborhood. Um, you know, you can have the, the best people in there every day, but still it, the whole nature of, of short-term rental kind of goes against the residential, you know, part of what you want in your, your home and in, in your community. And, you know, also worry about this setting, you know, a precedent, um, going forward in other areas of, of our city.
Yeah.
And the other, the other issue I have is simply that you buy a piece of property, it's your responsibility to go figure out what the rules are. And if you, you buy a piece of property with the intent to create a, an Airbnb, then you should go to the municipality and find out what, what are the regulations. Actually, you do need to do that before you actually close on a piece of property. If it's that type of investment property that you're going to buy. And I, you know, this apparently has been operating for over a year like this. So that just concerns me that there's been no effort made until Eddie, the codes guy, went down there after complaints from the neighbors to figure out what was going on.
I agree, yeah.
May I say something?
It's the applicant asking if he can.
Yeah, I'm Joel Farben, sorry. I, just to reiterate, I just, uh, we were not, under the impression because it was a multi-family that that was, that's what we bought under. Our realtor didn't tell us anything. And we had been operating it and we didn't know anything was even an issue until Eddie brought that up. And then Eddie said it, the way he said it's us was it was very simple. All we had to do is rezone it. I, I just applied for exactly what he told me to do and I put R three, so that's what he said. Then we can apply for a permit and start paying the taxes, which is what we were, uh, that's all that we had been advised to do. We didn't know any different, um, and we didn't know that we weren't in compliance. Um, so that's why we're trying to do this and trying to, you know, do our due diligence and address any concerns or any issues and.
Yeah. Have you been paying the, the taxes and stuff for the last?
We didn't know, but we're happy to pay, pay them.
But did you, did you have to pay them for the city of Chattanooga?
Yeah. Yeah. So the, uh, they take automatically for the state and the county. So we pay that. So that's why we're under the impression that Red Bank didn't have anything until we talked with Eddie. And then he was like, yeah, this is what you have to do and you have to get a permit for it, which you can only do if you're R three. Which, so he said, you have, first you have to apply to be R three, then you have to apply for a permit and then you can pay all the taxes, which we're happy to do.
Wow.
Well, this will be discussed on a Thursday as well, because there, we can't take a vote today.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. We can't. Um, but, um, but I would like to, to also say that, um, you know, uh, discussing the tax revenue and all of that, um, it's, it's important for everybody to understand. And, and I've, I've had to put together a matrix for Chattanooga regarding development and, uh, the maintenance of city infrastructure. And it really helps everybody understand, um, just how far off we are, uh, from our, uh, covering our maintenance, just standard maintenance of our roadways, our stormwater, our sewer infrastructure, all of that stuff. Uh, when you start applying the dollar amounts to the cost to maintain it versus the dollar amounts that we're bringing in for the, the taxes for the, the Airbnbs, the, you, you know, uh, just, uh, regular, uh, residential property taxes and all of that. It will amaze you that, uh, how, how short we are from being able to actually cover the, the cost of today's materials and labor for maintaining the city infrastructure. So although, uh, you know, I respect the fact that, that we're, we're generating a little more revenue with, uh, with Airbnbs or whatever, uh, and even, you know, with the new single-family, uh, development. But what we're collecting is, and what we can collect based on our footprint, uh, our city footprint, uh, is still way off from what our costs are to maintain, uh, our, our infrastructure at a satisfactory, um, level to, you know, that's why we hear complaints constantly about our roadways and this and that. Well, there's a reason for that. And, and you know, it's not just that the city is ignoring it. It's, it's just the money is not there to, uh, to, to take care of, uh, things, uh, y- y- you know, like people think they are. So, so I don't, I don't think we can put a, a whole lot into, uh, um, what we generate uh, from Airbnbs in, in that, that contribution to helping us maintain uh, our infrastructure for all of the citizens. So, um, but, but I, I'll share that matrix so that, that, uh, people can see, uh, you know, what, what we're bringing in versus what it's costing us to, to maintain, um, and, and pay for the materials and labor for, for all of the, the, the different infrastructure. But, um, um, but, um, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm still, um, on this one. I'm, I'm still, um, you know, for, um, sticking with our original, um, reason for going with the new zoning ordinance and, and, um, um, keeping this, um, uh, this particular, uh, property, um, zoned what it, it's currently, um, R1A for. So, um, so I guess, um, anybody else on this one? Um, I guess we've, we've covered this one quite a bit now. So, um, I guess the next agenda item then is, um, the rezoning of the 1010 Law Water Road from R1 to RTZ. Um, Ashley, you want to cover that one?
Sure. Um, Carla Murray is the applicant on this one with Land Acquisition, Acquisition Group. And, um, she has requested rezoning that would allow to. um, she's requested rezoning that would allow two single-family detached homes on the lot, it'd be subdivided into two lots, um.
Sounds like we had the two guys.
Um, and this is along Low Water, there have been several rezonings to RTZ, um, along Low Water already, um. Then, and they have, commonly have narrow lots. The main difference between this and its existing zoning of R one is that it allows for a narrower lot, um, and I will share with you, um, the drawing that she submitted to me that would, um, have Lot One and Lot Two with, um, two homes on it. It, it, it is a shorter lot than some of the other lots on Low Water Road, but it is still plenty large enough to meet the setback requirements, um, of the RTZ zone. I recommended approval, um, I didn't feel that any conditions were necessary since the RTZ zone already has, um, a limit of eight of eight units per acre as far as density, so, um, this is, this is limited to two homes regardless and then couldn't be townhomes because you have to have three homes in order to be a townhome in a row, so that was my recommendation. And, um, Ms. Murray is on the line as well, um, if you would like her to offer, um, additional information.
Sure, yeah, that'd be good.
Um, hi, everybody.
Hello.
I'm not sure if I'm supposed to jump in or how this works, do you have questions or what kind of?
Yeah, what type of, of homes are you, you, uh, planning to build and square footages and, and all of that of the, the homes?
So if we're looking at this particular drawing, um, this is just an initial idea. Um, the one on the left, and I know that the moratorium is still in place, so one of the lots wouldn't even be in play until that's lifted. Um, but initially we'd go with the smaller one that you see on the right side, Lot Two. Um, and then Lot One, and again, however long the moratorium lasts, um, will probably be smaller than that. Um, and the types of homes are more contemporary, but if you look at the, Ashley, could you pull up the, um, GIS? Um, if you have that.
Sure, the topo map or the?
The, the, where the, uh, no, the other one, sorry.
Okay.
Little, little, yeah, a little nervous here. Nope, the one with the foliage.
Um.
Okay, that's the, the topo, so.
Hmm. So here, let me see if I can make this smaller here.
Can have you, should, do you have it available if you would like?
You know what, I'm on my son's laptop, so, um, bear with me a minute, let me see if I can, it's not, I'm not gonna be able to pull it up. Anyway, so if we could click on that one, that would be good. Okay, so in, in the front of the lot, the intention on these lots is to keep as much of the vegetation as possible. Um, I did look at the area and I like how the setbacks will allow us to keep the trees, um. Yeah, that was something that we were considering, but
Right, right.
Like you guys were talking about, it's just way too skinny and I'm not, I don't wanna cheapen the neighborhood, so to speak, because it's well-established and they're on more property, so that's why we wanted to go with just the two. Um, but the initial idea is more contemporary, um, and they're custom homes. So they're not gonna be like cookie cutter, slap it in side by side and completely raise the whole lot, because that's just not, I don't like that when people do it, um, it's just my particular opinion. So we'll keep as many of the trees and everything on that lot and with the setbacks, the houses will be able to be, um, more in line, I think, with the rest of the neighborhood, which is what, I mean, it's important. So the homes will be custom, um, you know, just a higher grade, you know, to blend with the area, so we have a little bit more, uh, yard space for families that wanna move in. Um, two-by-six construction, dual-pane windows, solid corridors, custom cabinets, granite countertops, um. And I kinda like, oh, and we did, there was initially, um, in the beginning, a blue line potential issue, so I hired a hydrological engineer and she'll have those reports submitted once, um, the zoning does or doesn't go through, um, but there's no issue there is what she came out and found. Um, so that was a good thing. Um, yeah, and I think that's, what else can I tell you?
What, what's your price range of your, of your houses? Do you know?
So this particular one, I, we just ran some comps, um, on the area and the newer homes, um, for, and I call them cookie cutter homes, because that's what, I feel like they all look like each other. Um, the price ranges were between three forty-five and the highest being three sixty-nine. So my homes, because they're custom, they're gonna be more towards that three hundred seventy thousand dollar range, if not a little more. Um, potentially, you know, depending on the mo- moratorium, I may, you know, put that second lot for sale like it's an option for them to have it as a big yard, which I think would be really attractive to families that intend to stay in the area for a long time. Um, but that's just kinda something that I'm tossing around right now, so.
Okay. So, um, it, it appears, uh, you know, based on, on the, um, the sketches and, and all that, um, these would definitely, uh, be in a owner occupied, um, uh, range, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and so that's, that is a big positive, especially for me, I mean, I, 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 I've mentioned it before, but you know, forty-eight percent of single-family homes in Red Bank are non-owner occupied. So that, uh, that falls in line with some of the concerns we've heard from the earlier, um, um, citizens about some of the other cases, so. Um, being able to, to, to see new single-family homes that, that are, uh, more likely to be owner occupied, uh, is, is vital, in, in my opinion, and so, um, this particular.
Yeah, we're not, we're not building to rent this out at all, and in fact, if that second lot comes available, I'm thinking that it might be good for me, so. I like the area and I like the way it's gonna be setback in the trees and all of that, so. But yeah, this is definitely for, you know, long-term people moving in, so.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
Yeah, I've got the area pulled up here and, um, you know, there are some gorgeous trees on the property, so I like, um, I like that you're, you're, you're wanting to preserve those, I think that's really important.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, definitely, I, I agree, um.
That's rare, so thank you.
I, yeah, no, I'm totally about that, if there's stuff that we can keep, we definitely gotta keep it. If I have to move the floor plan a little bit, make it a little smaller or whatever, then that's what I'll do, because there's, it's a nice-looking lot.
Uh, yeah, and I also agree with all of that, I drove down there just, um, looking at the agenda, hadn't been down on that road in a long time and couldn't believe, um, all the development in the area, so definitely appreciate you, um, making that extra effort.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, that's great, so, um, I mean, obviously, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm recommending approval on, on my, my behalf, but, uh, I don't know, you know, if there's, there's anything else on this one the other commissioners wanna comment on or wanna add?
No, I mean, I think it would be a great addition to our community, uh, just from what I've seen, um, initially.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. All right, thanks a lot. And, um, I guess we will, uh, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Um, the re- rezone of, uh, three oh one and three oh five Hedgewood from R one to RT one. Um, Ashley, you wanna fill us in on that one?
Sure, this, um, property, it's fairly near the other Hedgewich, Hedgewood area that's being redeveloped, they, um, by Tyler Smith, um, he was in front of us last year. Um, and Ms. Cynthia Carver, who I believe is on the line, um, is the applicant. It is currently a single-family residential and she is requesting RT one, um, rezoning to build six townhomes. Um, it is in an area that has already a lot of townhomes, um, and apartments and multifamily. Um, can see the zoning, if you look at the zoning map, the property is in purple and so to the south is the RTZ area that, um, Mr. Smith is, um, currently building right now. And then there is several R three, um, apartment, um, type properties to the north and, um, sorry, east as well, so this area has experienced a lot of infill, um, and it already has a lot of density in that area, so I felt that, um, keeping, um, the denser townhome developments, um, near each other would be appropriate and, um, could work in this area. She has submitted a, um, a proposed site layout, now it would need to be altered a little bit, um, you can't really hold her to this, um, layout because it hasn't been reviewed, you know, by codes enforcement or anything, but, um, it would be neat to either, well, it needs to either be three in a row to be townhomes or it needs to go to R two instead of RTZ, but I felt if you put the three townhomes, um, together to create two rows of townhomes, it could be, um, a nice, like, smaller type, higher, high, well, I guess high for the, this Red Bank, um, density, um, development, there is a lot of demand for housing in general, rental and ownership. Um, I'm not sure, she might be able to speak to the planned ownership structure of this property, um, 'cause I'm not sure about that, but this, this roadway here most likely would have to be a, a publicly dedicated, um, road or a private drive that's built to city standards, um, in order to have frontage on that so that the homes could face that road, but otherwise I think this is a, um, the density-wise, it's a good proposal and appropriate rezoning of this area. Um, I didn't recommend any conditions, but if you guys had concerns and wanted to, um, recommend conditions, um, we could discuss that as well, but Ms., um, hmm, name is escaping me, um, Ms. Carver is on as well to, um, answer any questions and provide additional information.
Okay. Carver, you have, uh, any more to add to it?
Well, uh, nothing that she hasn't said already, uh, the road that is gonna go between the two will probably be a private drive. Uh, this is something we're gonna go ahead and get rezoned, um, for future development, right now there is one house on each property, but this will be something in the future and these pro, these townhomes will be sold and, uh, not rental properties.
Okay.
I have one question, and again, I'm new, so if I'm saying this incorrectly, but you were talking about the, um, site plan not being finalized, 'cause I noticed that it requires twenty-five feet of setback from R one, is that correct? And it's currently only designating fifteen feet, so I just think we need to make sure to honor that one, R one right there, um, and make sure we stick to that in any future plans.
Y- yes, it would, um, I did, I did notice that it, site plan at this point is just, um, very preliminary, uh, those planning commission actually doesn't review site plans for residential development. Um, that goes to, um, Eddie Clinton and his, his staff over in codes enforcement and they would certainly enforce that, um.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thanks, Kate, um, on the, along the same lines, and I know, um, codes enforcement and, and, uh, and all they review the, the plans, but I still have to, because it's such a critical, um, issue that we, we see and we deal with and we're paying the price for, um, in our sewer fees. Um, and that is addressing, making sure we address the stormwater runoff that is modified by taking away the impervious, I mean, the pervious surfaces, which the ground, the grass, where the water doesn't sheet flow, it has an opportunity to soak in and putting in impervious surfaces, for example, with this plan, um, it, it's probably added seventy-five percent more impervious area to the property. So that water has to go somewhere and, uh, currently without any, without knowing what they're proposing for designing, uh, the, the stormwater, uh, detention and all, the way everything flows now, it goes straight down Hedgewood and over to the city-owned uh, detention area at, uh, I think it's Linda, Linda Drive. Um, and so if we end up getting much more additional volume and velocities to that location, then the city could potentially need to do work and modify that area, um, due to this development. And so I just wanna make sure that when we are looking at these, that we know for sure we've got a good engineered system for detention, which the plan doesn't show, um, to address that additional velocity and volume that we're gonna be creating, uh, by putting this, this development in there, uh, when compared to what's currently there, so. But, um, but, I mean, other than those, those concerns, I think, um, I think considering, um, the surrounding, um, uh, uses and, and, and all, it would be proper, uh, you know, to, to approve for this type of development, um, um, you know, provided it, it complies with, with all, all the setback rules and all of that too, so. Um, any, any other comments there from the other commissioners, anything on this one?
Um, just one thing, Bill, I think Ms. Carver said that she planned, uh, for these to be, um, sold, not rented, is that?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, that, that's a plus for sure.
Yes.
Um, hopefully they will, uh, they will be in a range that also, uh, um, is more indicative of, uh, owner occupied, um, as well. So.
Yeah, and I would like to echo, you know, Bill's concerns on, on the runoff, because, you know, he's, he's exactly right. Um, now all of a sudden you've got a lot more mass of water funneling downhill, you know, down streets, so, you know, uh, yeah, I mean, I think that's something that needs to be taken in, into account, um, you know, going, going forward with this and making sure that, that runoff is mitigated, you know, pr- properly and that, um, you know, the existing infrastructure can, can handle that.
Okay.
That's great, all right, thanks, Nigel, um. Well, I guess then, um, what have we got, um, left here, new business? New business, uh, the uh number six, the subdivision regulations amendment to uh, to the road profile drawings. Ashley, you want to clear us up on that one?
This should be a pretty quick um approval, well, in my opinion. It's essentially, we took these um out of the new subdivision regulations and pointed folks to the MTAS. Their book of drawings, um standard specifications and, and somebody come and ask me about it. And I found that, you know, it really is kind of, if you don't know where you're looking, it is really hard to find these pictures. So my suggestion is just put them back in there as an appendix and then reference the appendix. So it would be a approval by planning commission, it wouldn't need to go to city commission. It is not changing anything as far as the rules. It's just adding these drawings in there so that folks can find them more easily.
Okay.
And Tim.
It sounds good. I guess um any, any additional new business um that any of the commissioners want to address? I know myself, I just, I just wanted to reiterate that I, that I want to, to share uh my proposed draft of um, you know, looking at our long-term and short-term rentals in an all-encompassing um ordinance um that, that provides, in my opinion, a little better um safety to the neighborhoods and addresses some of the concerns that we heard today. And so um as I get, get that stuff together and I, I get a chance to meet with the city manager, um, I'll share, uh, I'll share that information um for, for everyone else to take a look at. Because I think it's, it's critical. Um, it, it touches on um a lot of the, the concerns we have. For example, with, with the middle school property on Dayton Boulevard. A lot of, a lot of concerns that the citizens have already um talked about as well in the, in the neighborhoods. So um, um, I just hope everybody will, will take the time to, to read through it and, and um, you know, add some, some comments and some input. And um, and we can, we can move, move forward with, with a new revised ordinance on, on our um short-term, long-term uh rentals and all. So, um, but that, that's all I had.
I would love to, and again, I'm not sure exactly the right place for this, if it's in um the upcoming meeting or if we do something separately, but I would really like, as the planning commission, to spend some time reviewing the proposals for the middle school property um and potentially create some opportunities for community input. Um, I've already gotten a, I'm sure as you all have too, ton of feedback on that and just really working with the city commission to make such a big and important decision for our community. But I think if we have, um, if we could spend some time coming up with what structures we could put in place for community voice, I think that would be really helpful, like just specifically about those proposals. So I'll divert to y'all's guidance on how, what the best way to do that would be.
Yeah, I, I agree Kate, yeah, thanks for, for bringing that up. It, it is something that we really need to, to be a part of this time. So, um, and I will also, uh, because in reading one of the submittals, I saw where the, a, a um letter was submitted that talked about public involvement, public input. Um, well, I, I have all of the um, the public's comments in a PDF uh that was generated um at the time in twenty fourteen.
Oh, that's great.
And, and I'll, I'll share that with everyone so that you can read through those yourself and see if it matches up with what the letters of support were saying that came in some of the, uh, some of the packets, but um.
Yeah, and even if there's an opportunity to get new voice, because I know, you know, Red Bank has a lot of new neighbors um just in that short period of time, so um.
Yeah.
To discuss that further if we can as a group.
Yeah, that'd be great. No, I'm, I'm a hundred percent on board with that, so.
Hey, Billy, it was my understanding that those proposals would be given to the planning commission for review, but I'm not sure of the process, so we'll just need to find out what, what commissioners have to find and the best way to do that. Even I had heard a comment about perhaps having a joint meeting.
Okay.
Planning commissioners and the commissioners and to gain the pub, you know, some of the public comments and that sort of thing. So um, I agree, I mean, I, I would love for us to be a part of that. So we can just find out sort of what is the process that's contemplated now and if we want to chime in and say, and make a suggestion to change that process or just, just to be a part of it, you know? Because I think it's appropriate for the planning commission to be a part of it, just like Kate said, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, yeah.
Planning, and that's planning, so.
Exactly.
I completely agree.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, that'll be great if, if we can all meet um and, and look at it, that would be, that would be great, so, all right.
Okay.
Um, then I guess our uh unfinished business, uh, the thirty-five oh nine Delashment Road uh from R one to RTZ. I wasn't present um again at that last um meeting, so I do remember the original discussion about it. But uh, let's see, Ashley, what, what has changed on that one?
Um, Mr. Sennelly is on the line here to answer any questions. The main change is he, they have gone from um dividing it into four lots to just dividing it into three lots. Um, and you're going to maintain the existing home and put a home on either side um of the center of the existing home, and each lot will be at least forty, well, the smaller lot will be forty-five feet wide, the larger lot will be eighty feet wide. Um, I think the middle lot somewhere between fifty-five and sixty-five feet wide um. Ultimately, and so that it's changed the density down to just three on that lot. And that lot's about a little under an acre, like point nine eight acres or something. Um, and I recommended approval, um, and it would limit the conditions that I suggested. And you might have other conditions you want to add or change it. It would be limiting it to single-family homes at a density of three um per acre.
Uh, Ashley, I do remember this one, and I think this is a much better plan. I know we were concerned about the density right there, and I think this looks so much better. So I'm assuming that what he did is he did not go forward from the planning commission to the city commission. He just started over or revised his original plan or proposal to us. And then that's what this is, he's coming back through the process.
And, and I should, I just before I forget, state that I have received um a, a letter of concern from a neighbor, um particularly for the four, four lots. But she's still, when I let her know it was going to go down to three, she was still concerned about um, because there's do, several duplexes in the area, and she was, had safety concerns um as far as, you know, renters renting out units. So I just, you know, for the record, wanted to make sure that um I stated her concerns, and I'll reiterate that at the um official meeting on Thursday as well.
These are single-family, correct?
These, yes, these would be single-family.
Yeah, I know when he was there before, he said that he'd probably rent these out, which is not ideal. But uh, you know, maybe he will reconsider and try to sell them.
Yeah, uh, I, I would say that area would be, it, it's a much higher density area um already, so it would probably be tough to do that, but yeah, I'm with you. Yeah.
Um, well, if, if, if I may, this is, I'm the owner, Mike Sennelly. Um, the uh, you know, with cost of materials nowadays, I mean, everything's gone up, you know, eighty percent. And so my thought was, is to try to offset some of my expense by renting it for a short time and then selling them. Um, otherwise, I would just have to wait because it wouldn't make sense. I mean, the cost of building is so high right now. Um, and um, uh, but, you know, I've never, I don't have a problem. I vet my tenants very well, and everybody's on long-term leases and um, you know, there wouldn't, you know, I've never had a problem, so.
Okay, all right. Um, well, um, any, any other questions from uh, from the other commissioners? All right, well, I guess, you know, I think my position would be like Becky was saying, it's a, it's a much better um, um, site plan compared to what was originally submitted and reduces actually um some of the density there. Um, so, you know, I would, I think the recommendation that Ashley's got prepared with the conditions to uh, single-family homes is, is acceptable in my, in my opinion, so.
I do have a concern.
All right.
I, I own the property just adjacent to him on this development. Um, I live on the Wana Lane, but my acreage actually backs right up to this property. And uh, I do have concerns about rentals. I have a six-year-old son. I've lived here for about five years, and we've been cleaning up the lot, you know? Ever since I've lived here, it was overtaken with uh ivy and I guess pine beetles had got in there and killed a lot of the trees. So over the course of me living here, I've been cleaning up uh our portion of that lot, which I um, we bought, the previous owner bought with the neighbor, so the area couldn't be developed. So my only concern being, um, I guess probably about a year ago, I don't know, they renovated the house, had to put a new roof on it or whatever. And uh, a lot of the building material and just overall trash ended up on my lot, which, you know, I, I in turn started to um, you know, remove. And over the course of people living there, I have noticed trees cut down and this and that or the other, and the uh, the debris ends up on my, my lot. So my only concern is a definitive property lines over there because I just, I don't want them to encroach on, on my property anymore. And uh, just as an overall idea, I'm just not with developing it over there anymore. And uh, that's basically my major concern with it. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not a fella that likes squeezing these homes in there like that. And that, and that still just looks a little bit dense to me. So those are my concerns.
Okay, well, uh, I certainly appreciate your, your input. And I, I think, you know, um, with our codes enforcement and all of that, we, uh, we should be able to uh, to talk with Tim and, and those guys and make sure that um those things get addressed um during construction and all. And um, I'm not a hundred percent sure because I don't recall our original review, everything that we looked at. But did, did the owner have the property surveyed? Did we see a survey?
No, not yet, it was a, oh, sorry.
Not, not yet.
Survey would happen when he, after approval, when he subsidize, subdivise the property, it would be surveyed, um.
Yes, when I bought my home, I had a plat of the property. That's kind of the only, the only way that I kind of noticed I felt a little encroached on back there. You know, not a huge deal, but you know how it is with your property and.
Sure.
You know, you give an inch and, you know, it ends up a foot over. I, I'm in the development business, so, you know, I kind of know how it goes. And another thing is, you know, when we do uh constructions in an existing neighborhood, however, we like to barrier off the construction area. So if it does go through, I would appreciate them, you know, kind of whatever codes you have as far as um, you know, putting up barriers as far as around your construction sites or whatever. I'd like for that to be a consideration, you know?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. When, whenever you uh do uh land disturbance, you know, we have, you have to put in silt fences and stuff like that. And so all that stuff would be taken into consideration, absolutely done um based on the land about, the land disturbance permits and all that stuff. Um, you know, and also uh, there's a good chance that I'll just put up a fence on the property line uh on both sides.
Yeah, that would be great.
Around the houses, just to make sure. So, yeah, um, and, you know, I, I'm always there uh whenever there's uh any kind of construction. So if there's stuff blowing onto anybody's property from the wind or something like that, um, I'm always available. And so, you know, I want to make sure that I, I make a clean worksite. I mean, I was out there with magnets picking up nails from the roofing, you know, myself. So uh, you know, all, yeah, all you gotta do is let me know. I mean, sometimes you can't see stuff right away. So if you see it and you just let me know, I'll have somebody pick it up, so you don't have to worry about it, you know?
Yeah, I, I'd forgotten um about, you know, the fact you've definitely got to get erosion controls up and all of that, which will, will help keep a lot of that on, on your site even, you know, uh, with the wind blowing and all, so. Um, but um, but yeah.
Well, if the properties are going to be fenced, that's a huge relief to me. I would, I would really appreciate that.
That, that would really help because you can see the line is very tight there, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I agree.
Y'all just need to trade phone numbers and be friends so that y'all can know exactly where that property line is.
Oh, I know, if I've got a problem, I'll, I'll. Absolutely, it's a, it's not a huge.
I do think when it's surveyed, you know, the important thing is, before anything's done, is to be sure that you both know and agree with where that property line is that divides your property from, from his property.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I'm accordance with the lines, but.
Y'all may already, I already know.
The survey, yeah, the survey that I have to submit to the city to change the GIS will absolutely have the correct property lines, and there'll be pins and all that stuff, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah, so that'll come with the uh, with the plat, so, okay. All right, well, um, any, any other questions, uh, comments on this one? And uh, I think uh, we're, we're good with uh, with Ashley's recommendation um on that one. And uh, I guess that uh, that concludes the uh agenda um for today. Unless anybody has anything else uh they want to add for additional business.
I move, we adjourn, see, see y'all on uh Thursday.
All right, second for that, I'm good. We will talk to you guys on Thursday then.
See you then.
Okay, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye Nigel.
Bye.
Bye. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley.